Good evening and welcome candidates, you who are in the audience and those viewing at home. This is the Candidate Forum for the Iowa City City Council, and it's sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Johnson County and the Community Transportation Committee. I'm Miriam Timmerhakert. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I'll be the moderator for this evening's forum. Our timekeeper is Deanne Moore. Thanks. The forum is being livestreamed on the League's Facebook page. It's also being filmed for rebroadcast on the three public education and government channels in Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty. Please check their websites for scheduling. Additional information about the candidates can be found at the League's vote411.org website. The League of Women Voters is about to celebrate its 100th anniversary and the passage of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. Please watch our website and our Facebook page for centennial celebration events coming up in 2020. The League is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization which neither supports nor opposes specific candidates or parties, which is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside the room, but no buttons, literature, or signs should be worn or distributed inside this room. The League does take positions after considerable study of the issues, and it does act to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work not only to register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues and to assist their participation in government. Membership in the League is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. Please join us. We can use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. Democracy works best when more people are involved, and again, thank you all for coming out tonight. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All candidates are registered with the auditor's office where invited to participate, and thank you all for coming. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates, we'll have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions, starting with one from the League and one from our cosponsor, the Community Transportation Committee, and then we have questions submitted on cards from people in the audience. League members are distributing cards and pencils. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Hold up the cards, and a League member will bring them up to me. Questions that fall in the same general category might be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Each candidate will have one minute to answer, to respond to the questions. Due to the timeframe, there will not be time for rebuttals, and near the end of the scheduled time for this event, around 8:10, each candidate will have a two-minute closing remark. The speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening. So, the timekeeper, Deanne, will give you a one-minute, a 30-second, and a stop card. Tonight, we have all the candidates running for the Iowa City City Council. Running for two at-large seats are Megan Alter, Laura Burgis, and Janice Weiner, and running for the district seats are Pauline Taylor and John Thomas. Pauline Taylor's running for District A, and John Thomas is running for District C, and they are unopposed. And then we have the three women for the two seats at large. So let's get started with opening statements. Please speak directly into the microphone so you can be heard. And we'll start with Megan Alter.
A is for Alter. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. I'm really excited to be able to answer your questions, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. So, my name is Megan Alter, and I'm running for one of the at-large seats. I moved here 25 years ago as a graduate student to get my PhD in English Lit, and, like many people, I chose to stay here afterwards. I took root, and I really couldn't leave. There's just too much that's enticing about Iowa City, including the fact that 20 years ago, I met my husband. 15 years ago, we started looking around for a house, and were able to buy one in the South District where we still live, same house. And then, we now have two children, one in first grade and one in sixth grade, and they both go to Alexander Elementary. One of the things that I appreciate the most about Iowa City that I realized pretty quickly was how diverse it was, and as I've grown, the city itself has grown too. It's become more and more diverse, and it's something that really is one of the strengths. There are people who are lifelong residents, there are people who are from out-of-state like me, and there are people who come from other countries, and together, we've all kind of created this really cool tapestry that is Iowa City. And it's a phenomenal place to be. However, I've also done a lot of volunteering. When my kids were born, I decided to try and get more involved, and so I've been volunteering with Iowa Women's Foundation for several years. I'm a big sister for six years running. I was appointed Housing and Community Development Commissioner a year and a half ago, and also I'm on the Affordable Housing Coalition of Johnson County. In all of these things, I have discovered that there is actually a great deal of need as well in this community, and so I'm running because I want everyone who lives in Iowa City to be able to enjoy it. We're as good a community as we are supporting everyone, and I really want to turn all of our diversity into the strength that it can be even more through more inclusivity. Thank you.
All right, Laura Burgis.
Good evening. My name is Laura Burgis, and I am running for one of the at-large seats on Iowa City's City Council. I'm a lifelong Iowa City resident. My first job in high school was actually mostly in this room, videotaping Iowa City City Council meetings, and that led to a career in public service where I sat through hundreds of hours of Iowa City's own council meetings and also learned a lot about municipal governance. I was a department head for the City of North Liberty for 10 years, where I learned all about the city budget, how the process works. I saw a lot of different elected officials, the dynamic between elected officials and staff, and I focused that career on improving communication between the local government and the people. I then went to law school at the University of Iowa, and now, for the last eight years, I've been an attorney and a mediator in private practice in a law firm that's been serving our community for over 90 years. And what I hope to do if I'm elected to Iowa City City Council is really to focus on the process. I think you'll hear tonight that there is not a great deal of substantive difference between the three at-large candidates. We all believe that we need to improve affordable housing, focus on regional transportation, minimize our impact on the environment, but it's my background from municipal governance and serving as a mediator where I've been trained to take in opposing viewpoints and find common ground, to build consensus and to problem-solve creatively that really makes me the best candidate for this job. I also live in the South District with my husband and our daughter Evelyn, who attends Southeast Junior High, and we've been there for 16 years. Thank you.
All right, Pauline Taylor.
Thank you to the League for the invitation to participate in the forum and for all that the League does, especially in voter registration, because we all know that's very important. My name is Pauline Taylor. I am running for reelection to the Iowa City City Council. I am currently serving, in my first term, on the council representing District A, which includes the western and southern areas of Iowa City. I've lived in Iowa City for almost 50 years now. I grew up in Des Moines and came to Iowa City shortly after graduating from high school to attend the University of Iowa. In 1974, I graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from the College of Nursing, and following graduation, I began working as a staff nurse at University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinic. And after working there for over 38 years, I retired in 2012. Some of my skills as a nurse, I believe, have been beneficial to me in serving as a council member. Most importantly, the ability to listen to what a person has to say. A good nurse must listen carefully to what a patient says in order to effectively manage their care. An effective council member must be able to listen to everyone, whether it's a resident, a developer, businessperson, fellow council member, and then be able to make decisions based on what they've been presented. My family members include my daughter Christine, son-in-law David, 12-year-old grandson Michael, four-year-old granddaughter Delilah, and I'm looking forward to the birth of my third grandchild, who is due near the end of November. I'm running for reelection in order to be able to play a part in following through with the transit study and the climate action plans. Those are both very major plans. My major focus will continue to be the need for affordable housing. This is a nationwide issue, but also a major issue locally. Again, my name is Pauline Taylor, and I'm running for reelection to the District A seat on the Iowa City City Council.
Thank you, Pauline. John Thomas.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for coming out tonight, and thanks to the League for sponsoring this event. I have lived in Iowa City for 10 years. I live on the North Side, and pretty much ever since I arrived here, I've become involved in public affairs. For the first year, or shortly after arriving, I started serving as the coordinator for the North Side Neighborhood Association. That led to engagement with city affairs, serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission for three and a half years, and then that, in a sense, evolved to being elected to serve District A on the city council. So I'm almost completed with my first term, and I would say I'm running again because I would like to continue the work that I and the current council has completed over the last almost four years. Among some of our more notable achievements, I would include the Affordable Housing Action Plan, which has won both awards from the state as well as the American Planning Association at the state level, our Bicycle in Parks master plans, the Public Transit Study, and lastly, the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, which we recently issued a declaration of a climate crisis with which we'll be receiving a response from staff in about three weeks as to what we're going to be doing about that. So my hope, again, is to continue that work. It's kind of interesting to me in that I would say from the last four years, where the focus had been on land use and perhaps historic preservation, at least on some of the more controversial issues, now I see the issues as being equity and climate action. So there's been, I think, a significant shift in terms of the concerns that we have as a community, and I hope to be able to continue to work on them. So thank you.
Thank you. And Janice Weiner?
Thank you. My name is Janice Weiner, and I am running for one of the at-large seats. I grew up in this community, K through 12. I was a music kid, and I actually sort of grew up in community theater as well, because my mother was one of the founding mothers of that. My dad and I biked a lot, and we helped push for some of the first bike paths, and I will always be grateful to the public schools here for launching me in life. Now I'm running for city council because public service matters. 26 years in the U.S. Diplomatic Corps taught me what service and commitment mean. I'm running because local government matters. It's the very foundation of democracy. It's the incubator of ideas and policies and businesses. It's the level of government on which you have the most direct influence and which has the most direct impact on your lives, and we can affect change and make progress right here in Iowa City. I'm running because I care deeply about this community and all its people, because we must confront our climate emergency, because we need more affordable housing and public transit that runs when and where people need it, and we absolutely need to expand affordable quality daycare. We also have some big infrastructure problems to attack. Fixing our streets won't come cheap. To tackle any of these things, we must maintain the city's current fiscal stability at a time when the state legislature has continued to reduce our revenues. I chose to return home to this community because it has so much to offer, and I got involved with nonprofits like Shelter House because at my core, I know we need to reach out and lend a hand. Together, we can work to build a city where everyone feels at home and where we can truly live our values, including diversity, education, the arts, entrepreneurship, and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. All right, we're going to start with a question from the League of Women Voters. Almost 10,000 Iowa City households cannot afford their housing and earn less than 50% of the area's average income. What should the Iowa City Council do to make sure that households who can only afford 500 or 600 a month for housing have opportunities in Iowa City? And we will start with Laura.
Great. I think the city needs to continue implementing the Affordable Housing Action Plan that was referenced already. One thing that's really struck me as I've been talking to residents and, you know, listening to the city council and listening to different stakeholders is that for how high of a priority affordable housing appears to be and how much we're talking about it and how elevated it is as an issue, I think the city needs to look at where it is prioritized. So I agree with Councilor Thomas that, you know, this has become more of a focus, and it needs to continue. So allocating funds to the Affordable Housing Fund for permanent affordable housing needs to continue. I'm in favor of the affordable housing component of the TIF policy and that continuing as well. We know that there's some market forces that we hope will help drive down the cost of housing. There's been a significant increase in the number of housing units that have been constructed in the last few years, so a combination of all of those factors.
Thank you. Pauline?
Thank you. I believe in the last three to four years, the council has made significant strides in the area of affordable housing. You'd mentioned the Affordable Action Plan, the 15-step, and of those 15, the council has already, and the city staff have already accomplished 14 of those, which is pretty major. The largest, of course, was the $1 million allocated from 650,000 to $1 million to go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to be allocated in different percentages, which includes also an aspect that gets forgotten sometimes, and that's the emergency fund. We had to develop an emergency fund a few years back when there was an incident with the Rose Oaks Development and displacement of those folks, so that helps with that. Some people often forget about that. We did also include inclusionary zoning in the Riverfront Crossings, which they are required to provide at least 10% to the lower-income families, but I think there are a lot of innovative ways that we can do to enable persons to afford housing.
Thank you. John?
Yes, as I mentioned, we have in place the Affordable Housing Action Plan. It has 15 actions, and they go all the way from trying to avoid displacement, you know, which has become a critical issue with respect to manufactured housing. I think that's going to be an area of concern as we move forward, and that's something that also has just sort of developed relatively recently, so that's an area that needs our focus. One of the 15, one action that we have not completed is revisiting our regulatory framework. So, for example, issues with respect to setbacks, which can limit the amount of land within a given property can be developed, will be looked at. Is there going to be a minimum lot size that could perhaps be reduced a little bit? One of the more controversial issues is allowing more than simply single-family homes in what's own single-family currently. This is something that other cities are beginning to look at. I do support the $1 million.
All right, thank you. Janice?
I think the current council has done very good work on this. I think we also need some new and different ideas. I'd like to have everybody at the table, from builders to NGOs to members of government to the university, to university students who are also consumers of affordable housing. I think we need to look at changing some of the zoning laws so that we can have zero lot lines and smaller lots and mixed neighborhoods. I also think we need to talk to the school board, because they end up with gerrymandered districts for elementary schools because of the way the housing mix is currently, to see what would work for them. And finally, I think we ought to also consider something like an online database, where people who would like to stay in their homes, maybe older people, maybe people who have children, but have a space, a basement, or a room to rent out, might consider renting it out at a highly reduced rate in exchange for some services, whether it's mowing the lawn, or shoveling the snow, or maybe daycare. I think we can come up with a variety of new solutions.
Thank you. And Megan?
Thanks. So, first, I want us to acknowledge also that the root of people not being able to afford housing is that they're not making enough money, right? And the loss of P&amp;G is huge, and so that is ancillary, and yet it is also a root cause that I think that council can take up with economic development to figure out ways to entice businesses to get here of all kinds. In terms of addressing affordable housing right now, there's a couple of options that I think would be interesting to look at. I'm in favor of city-created vouchers to supplement HUD's vouchers. We have a little over 1,200 right now. I think that would be a wonderful option to look at. I would like to also look at incentivizing landlords to help create more affordable units, since landlords themselves are talking about, they're concerned about vacant units right now. This could be a win-win for both the people who need it and for people who want their units rented out. I additionally think that we need to look at how students are getting assessed for their housing. There are vacant, student-centric neighborhoods right now, and they're not qualifying for affordable housing right now. So those are three.
Thank you very much. We have a question from our cosponsor, the Community Transportation Committee. Expanding Iowa City's public transit hours and services could potentially increase earnings for workers and decrease carbon emissions in the region. With affordable housing, climate action, and transportation initiative proposals in Iowa City's next budget, do you think expanding transit services should be a priority, and would you vote to increase funding for transit? And we're going to start with Pauline.
As if anybody's been following the council meetings, I'm very much a proponent of changes to our transit system, or at least studying it, and had actually proposed that we hire the consultant, and I'm very anxious it's underway now. I've heard that they've been out on the buses and surveying people and getting responses, so I'm looking forward to getting their results on that. We have some very innovative ways. I heard last week that we're also even looking at, and this goes along with the environmental things, is that we're looking at electric buses even for the system. They would be smaller, so they might be on the smaller routes, but that goes along with the whole climate control and reducing the carbon emissions, so I think I'm excited about that. So I think there will be some big things coming as far as transit changes.
John?
Yes, I'm certainly supportive of doing the transit study and seeing how we can improve service. I think some of the issues that have come up would be Sunday service. I think that's a critical issue, as well as extending hours. Another concern would be, you know, the frequency of service. If you have to wait a half an hour or an hour, that may not promote ridership, so we need to be thinking about headways and perhaps like with our bicycle system, are there parts of Iowa City that, in a sense, we want to incentivize with our public transit service? There may be opportunities where it makes more sense, like with the bike lanes, to give more priority to public transit. And then I would couple all of this with an emphasis on our expanding our bikeway system, which can be tied to transit if the transit service can accept the bicycles as well as walking. Any transit trip begins and ends with a walk, so if the connection to the bus service isn't well-designed, the transit itself may not be served.
Thank you. Janice?
I'm very happy that the transit study is underway. I would like to see, at least for filling the gaps evening and especially Sunday, some short-term system that we can put in place that might then eventually be shifted once we have the results of the transit study, but that will help people in the meantime. Maybe that will take the form of vouchers or some other similar thing that can be used with rideshare programs, but those people really need to be able to get to work. I also think we need ultimately more than the spokes on the wheel. I would like to see people be able to get places without having to go all the way into town and back out again. I agree on smaller buses, and I would also really like to see us take a shot at regional transit, at least one or two routes, like a big circle route that goes up to Buke Street, past Liberty High, up through North Liberty, down through Corleville, and the opposite way as well. I think that would help a lot of high school and junior high students, as well as their parents get to and from, and people who come to work in Iowa City. So I would like to see us try and overcome those barriers and move forward.
Thank you. Megan?
So I also agree that it's fantastic that the study is taking place. However, it is right now at its very beginning stages, and it's going to take about a year for it to complete, and we're not sure then how long it's going to take for implementation and whether that's going to be phased or an overnight overhaul, which has been done. So I agree with many others up here that something has to be done in the interim, and I've been a proponent for pilot programs. Nothing has changed in 25 years. I did not have access to a car for the first seven years that I lived here, and so I relied on public transportation. I can speak from experience when I say it's a combination of things. It's buses, it's driving, or it's buses, it's walking, it's catching rides from friends, and so we need to really oversee this not as a piecemeal kind of fix of what do we do for public transportation, but let's look at this as an entire infrastructure and ecosystem so that we can also get off of feeling the need to use vehicles in the first place. Let's make a real kind of holistic attack on how we do our public transportation so that then we do not feel the need to drive.
All right, thank you. Laura?
Well, our fixed route transit system might not have changed a whole lot in 25 years, but a lot of other things have. The emphasis that the city has made in making our community more bikeable and walkable has to continue, and I think that's an important priority, and also having, you know, more flexible systems. So the fixed route transit that we have that runs on a certain schedule is only one solution, and we know that there are lots of other opportunities out there. So I'm also excited about the transit study and am concerned a little bit about the amount of time that it will take, but for example, if we know that purchasing one, you know, regular-size bus costs about half a million dollars, well then what can the city do in allocating resources towards flexible alternatives, you know, whether it is subsidizing other types of transportation or, you know, having smaller vehicles? Those kinds of solutions we know are out there, and we definitely have to look regionally. There is a bus that goes to North Liberty and through Corleville now. There's the 380 Express. You know, we've looked at light rail in the past between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City, so I want to make sure we continue looking at all those options and take the recommendations of the study.
All right. Feel free to interrupt me anytime if I cut someone off and don't, you know, if I cut someone off instead of moving on to the next question. But I think we're ready for audience questions, and we'll be starting with John, I believe. What was your opinion regarding the controversy over the new benches on the pedestrian mall, whether they should have center rails? What position did you take or would you have taken?
Yeah, that was an interesting experience for us as a city. I felt the concerns with respect to the mid-rail were that the midrails did have an impact on the ways in which the benches could be used by the general public. I did not agree with the main focus, which seemed to be on homeless. In my experience, I don't believe our downtown has a serious homeless issue that we're facing, but I felt that the mid-arms did disrupt how, for example, a family might use those benches, where they might want to use the entire bench length rather than have it broken up into two pieces. So I did support the removal of the mid-arms on some of the benches, and then also I advocated for the preservation of the benches which had the artwork on them. That was something that I brought into the conversation as well.
Thank you. Janice?
It was interesting to watch this develop from the outside, and also as someone who is on the Board of Shelter House, it was especially interesting to watch how the concern seemed to be for people who were experiencing homelessness. I believe that people experiencing homelessness really need to have some other solutions, such as people from some of our NGOs like Shelter House can help them with. In terms of finding common ground on the benches, it seems to me that the ultimate solution was a good one. Keep some of the new benches, keep benches with artwork, keep a few of the other benches and have a mix, and I think that we can arrive at solutions like that without necessarily having to have a major controversy in the community, but by bringing the issue forward, discussing it, and coming to a compromise.
Thank you. Megan?
I agree with the outcome, that the mix seems to work well, and like Janice, I was on the outside. I think that really, it was, it's more interesting to me to think, it was a Band-Aid for a very large wound, perhaps, and if we really want to talk about how we can help the homeless, then yes, I don't think that worrying about how many benches have arms or not is really the right solution. One of the things actually I find most interesting to think about is whether we could have like a short-term shelter that's much closer to downtown, because right now, you have to go out to Gilbert or right along the old recycling for that emergency shelter, and I think that there needs to be some other options for people to be able to take a shower, take a nap, and not have to walk a mile and have to do it.
Thank you. Laura?
That was a really interesting controversy, because I think the city missed an opportunity to refocus the conversation to the fact that people should not be sleeping on benches, and that the City of Iowa City has done a lot to address the homeless concern in Iowa City and continues to. City and continues to do a lot. That was coinciding almost exactly in time with the opening of Cross Park Place, Shelter House's, you know, housing-first model that the city was a huge partner in. And so I was frankly disappointed to see that we weren't talking about solutions. We were talking about a perceived problem. It was really a failure of the process, as far as I was concerned, just to see that we really let the narrative be hostile architecture, which I think also goes to the city's opportunity to help inform the public how decisions like this are made. And the fact that there were, you know, meetings and presentations of the plans and people had an opportunity to give input, but clearly, the folks who were concerned about that design didn't attend those meetings or didn't have the opportunity, they felt, to give the input. And so that, to me, identifies a place where we can really fix that process and help with communication.
Thank you. Pauline?
I have to admit that the whole discussion did come as quite a surprise to me, and I believe the rest of the council as well, especially that it seemed to escalate so much and just, people were just very angry about the situation and not really seeing both sides of it, which I did understand both views, I think, as John touched on. There were some issues with the, having a centerpiece on the benches. But as Laura mentioned, the city itself has done a lot towards the homeless, and particularly Cross Park Place. If you're not familiar with that, we worked very closely with the police department, the hospital, and the shelter house to identify individuals who would benefit from having a place to live. And there's like 24 spots for folks there. And that's been very beneficial, and it was kind of about the same time this discussion was going on. So I didn't really understand that, although, and as Janice said, you do have to compromise, and we do have to come to a compromise. And you asked what position I took, and I did take to compromise and have a mixture of the benches with the center and without, and then also to have some of the artwork ones saved.
Thank you. We'll be starting with Janice for the next question. What do you see as the highest priorities or the lowest hanging fruit for reducing greenhouse gas emissions citywide?
I think there are several. I believe we can solarize. We had solarized Johnson County a year ago. We can, we can work together with other cities and the county to do a second wave of solarization. We can solarize with subsidies some housing of some people who are not so well-off as well, so that we get the double bang of helping reduce carbon and helping them reduce their utility bills. We can subsidize, as I said, but also by retrofitting. Retrofitting houses that are currently fairly leaky, and that would, again, reduce the amount of carbon emissions and help people lower their utility bills. And we can lead, both in our own buildings. If we have a boiler to replace, we can replace it with an electric boiler. If we're building a new building, we can put solar on it. And we can work very closely with the university. They are part and parcel of this community. Their power plant produces the greatest amount of emissions, so anything we could do in concert with the university to reduce those emissions will help us all.
Thank you. Megan?
So first and foremost, a really easy, low-hanging fruit, I'm going to take you literally, is to plant more trees. That's already been done, actually, on South Sycamore, which is fantastic. It's obviously not enough, but it's a start, and it's also part of community building. I think one of the biggest things that we have to do for climate action is actually have everyone buy in. This is not something that we have to do, it's something that we get to do. I think that if we really frame it as such, then more and more people are going to buy in. And of course, there are things like incentivizing people to get solar on their buildings, create the municipal, or put solar on municipal buildings, as well as the fact that we can incentivize landlords to green their properties so that renters' utility bills go down and the property's value goes up. We actually get double-banged for that with affordable housing then, potentially. But I think that there's a number of things that we can do, but also, we need to get a climate action coordinator. I think that that's going to be somebody who can really sort of marshal forces for the city and help the community understand what needs to get done.
Thank you. Laura?
I think the simplest beginning fix will be public education and communication. So the city knows that for its own infrastructure, its own buildings, its own fleet of vehicles, kind of what it can do, but really focusing on spreading information to the community about what businesses and individuals and landowners and developers can do, emphasizing the climate benefits of historic preservation, talking about the benefits of making different choices for our transportation options. I mean, there are so many things, large and small, that the city now, you know, will be able to coordinate facilitating getting that message out. And I do agree that having a person or multiple people who are in charge of that and making sure that it is throughout the, you know, the entire city, someone with authority to help direct those, those actions and communications within the city and help get the word out is just really critical to start that process.
Thank you. Pauline?
I was surprised to see that the city itself is actually a very small percentage of the carbon emissions in the community. The University of Iowa and Midwestern Energy have a very large portion of that. So I think one thing that we need to do is to work really closely with them, whether that's a low-hanging fruit or kind of a high-hanging fruit or not. But as Laura mentioned, I think a good start is to have education efforts to the general public, because if everybody's like me, you sit there thinking, well, what can I do? You know, switch from gas stove to electric stove, or electric to gas, or whichever, get an electric vehicle, those kinds of things. But I am supportive of hiring a person that can help with our sustainability coordinator and work with our Climate Action Commission to do some public education, of which there's an event coming up at Big Grove. Look at the icgov.org site.
Thank you. John?
Well, much of our emissions are generated by buildings and transportation. So how do we, how do we reduce those in terms of low-hanging fruit? You know, I would say with respect to transportation, we can accelerate the expansion of our bike network, promote bikeability, promote walkability further. Megan referred to the trees. The trees have a lot of potential benefits with respect to climate, but with respect to walkability, it's very difficult to walk in this town when it's 95 degrees out and you don't have any shade cover from, from the canopy. Buildings, I would like us to try to prioritize reducing utility bills and essentially try to tie that to our Affordable Action Plan, so we address both of those issues with, with the one action. And then more expansively, with respect to the trees, the, a subset of our climate action, in my view, should be reducing the heat island effect. Trees are helpful with that.
Thank you. The city council holds its maximum leverage on development projects at the time of rezoning or TIF request. What sustainable environmental acts would you require developers to perform to receive the rezoning or TIF? This question was specifically about environmental acts, but if you want to throw affordable housing into, I think that fits well with the whole rezoning TIF.
Could you repeat the question again?
Yes. The city council holds its maximum leverage on development projects at the time of rezoning or TIF request. What sustainable environmental acts or affordable housing acts would you require developers to perform to receive the rezoning or TIF? And we'll be starting with Megan. Yep?
Okay. Well, to begin, I think that it's fantastic, actually, that TIF is now requiring LEED certification, not just LEED standards, and that they are actually upping them from, I think it's perhaps gold, but now there are actually discussions about platinum. And it means more for the builder, however, it's important because we need to build the buildings of the future. So that's one place that I think climate action can occur, and that we do have the leverage for that. In terms of affordable housing as well, I think this is where we can actually start talking about real incomes and real rent prices, not just 60%, say, which is a popular one for a number of affordable housing options of AMI, because in fact, in pockets of Iowa City, that ends up driving up, or not pockets, but the median income for Iowa City tends to be higher, and so it's not a really realistic, actual rent for people.
Laura?
Well, I think we first have to come from a place of knowing where the city's authority begins and ends. Unfortunately, our hands are tied a great deal on some of these issues by the legislation from the state of Iowa. And so where we cannot compel through regulations, because they may have been made illegal, we have to work through relationships and finding the right balance. TIF is a very tricky thing, because you have to know when, when have you asked too much, or when are you asking enough to get the public benefit that is required in exchange for that incentive. And so as it relates to, to affordable housing, I would be in favor of considering, you know, maybe a slightly different regulatory framework if a developer is willing to come in with better options for affordable housing, maybe having some kind of streamlined process that's well-established in advance. A lot of these decisions involve a great deal of discretion exercised by the city council, and that causes a lot of uncertainty and a lot of consternation, honestly, among the developers, as well as, I think, up on the council and for city staff. So creating those parameters in advance, I think, is really important.
Thank you. Pauline?
I think that we're also, our hands are also tied to some of our own plans. Our Form-based Code and Comprehensive Plan for some of the areas tie us to certain building standards, heights, and what the building is made out of, and, and those kinds of things. So I think that we, as a council, over the next few years, really need to take a serious look at, at some of these, the Form-based Codes and the Comp Plans, and revisit them and see if things have changed for the neighborhoods that these developments are going up in. And as far as environmental things, there are a number of things. I think the LEED certification is very important. We need to stress that, and not just encourage it and give bonuses for it, but, but require it, and, and green space. Green space is important. We're losing more and more of it all the time, as well as the trees. Permanent payment, I've been talking about that for a long time, and they say it's too expensive, but it's important and it does make a difference. Also affordability for longer than the 10-year period that is currently in the, in the plan.
Thank you. John?
We do have some language in our TIF policy with respect to LEED certification. I can't remember the exact wording, but it, it requires a certain level of points that, that can be applied toward LEED certification that need to be met in order to qualify for TIF. So that, that's one aspect of that, although we just recently, one of our actions was to create the, you know, Climate Action Commission, basically. And one of their first tasks will be to look at our, I would imagine, our TIF policy as it relates to buildings, as, as well as help us work with, within the state regulatory system in terms of improving the, the building standards that are currently in place with respect to energy efficiency. So I think those are two important issues. I'm very interested in promoting attainable housing as well as affordable housing. So in other words, trying to bring the cost of housing down, not just on those units that are set aside. Thank you.
Thanks. And Janice?
I think there are two different things here. If we're talking about requests for rezoning that don't involve TIF, if the building meets the requirements for the zoning, for the rezoning, I don't believe that we on council have the right to say no. If we're talking about TIF or other areas where we can put additional requirements or incentives on, then I think it's a different story. And as the, as the current Iowa City TIF requirements require, they can, they can work toward LEED certification. The flip side is that if we really want affordable housing, making something LEED certified is much more expensive, and it's really going to drive up the cost of it. So I would like to think outside of the box a little bit and maybe say, if you're going to build a building, maybe as, as part of your incentive, you can help retrofit some other buildings to cre, to increase the, to increase their ability to reduce the amount of carbon that they emit.
Thank you. And Megan, you started that one, right? Okay. So this next one will start with Laura. I'm going to combine two. You should be able to get both of these in your minute. How much time do you intend to spend per week on council business, and what experience do you have that sets you apart from the others?
I'm hoping that it's a 20-hour-a-week job, but to be determined. As I mentioned, as far as my experience, I think just knowing how city government works is critical. I will hit the ground running. I understand the vocabulary. I know what the process entails, and I believe I know how it can be improved. And then again, my role as a mediator. I know I'll be wearing that hat to build consensus on the city council, to encourage discussion that puts a lot of different interests on the table. This is not a zero-sum game. It's not one person wins and the other person loses. I know that we can find solutions that do accommodate, accommodate multiple interests. I haven't mentioned my community service, other than my professional background yet, and I have deep roots, starting from when I worked at United Action for Youth as a volunteer when I was a teenager. I served on the Telecommunications Commission for nine years as an appointed position. I'm on the, I'm a volunteer attorney with Iowa Legal Aid and have been on boards and commissions throughout my adult life. So I know a lot of the different players in our town and a lot of the different organizations with which, with whom we can partner, and I know that that will be critical as well.
Thank you. Pauline?
It's an interesting question, because it actually did come up at a council meeting when it was proposed that we raise the council wages. And there was a lot of discussion about it, and with my background in, in unions and organizing, I realized that we really don't, on a council, have an hourly position. It's a salary position. We make so much per month, and you put into it whatever you have time or the effort to do, and it really varies. Now, a few months ago, we had a packet that was 1,000 pages long, and that takes a lot of time to read and go through, but we could have some anywhere from 300 to 600 pages. So, and there are meetings and ribbon cuttings and a number of other things, not just the meetings that we go to that require some time. So you really can't boil it down to an amount of time, I don't, I don't think. Now, and what qualifies for me, obviously, I've been on it for the last four years, and I mentioned my, my listening skills as a nurse and decision-making also as a nurse, and, and the four years' experience.
Thank you. John?
Yes, I've been working on council now for almost four years. So I would, it's a variable time commitment. I would say it's between 10 and 20 hours a week. It's also, I think, dependent on what your other responsibilities are in life. So if you have a family and a 40-hour-a-week job, all of that can make pressing demands on you, and often, I would, I suspect, what may be sacrificed is your hours on council, frankly. But fortunately, I don't have too many of those pressures, so it's, it's a little bit more open-ended for me. And then in terms of experience, as I mentioned in my introductory comments, I served as a neighborhood coordinator. I have a very strong sense and commitment to neighborhood planning and zoning, great training in terms of our zoning code and comprehensive plan, and then four years on council trying to resolve some of these complicated, complex issues we face.
Thank you. Janice?
I will have to cede to those who've actually been on council with respect to how much time it takes. I would guess that it's somewhere between 10 and 20 hours a week, but my experience leads me to believe that it can expand to fill whatever the time allotted is. In terms of experience, I have been a lifelong public servant. I know what that commitment means. I also bring to, would bring to council a certain perspective of having grown up here and then having lived in cities, other cities, both in this country and abroad, so seeing what works and what doesn't work other places, and having the perspective of coming back and seeing what's changed. And then in terms of experience, I really spent a career talking to people across the political spectrum everywhere I went, all different walks of life, different, different interests, different, different businesses. And I think that that will be really key in talking to people throughout the city and going to people where they are, because not everyone is initially comfortable coming to council. I think as, as some of the people have done, we need to go to people where they are.
Thank you. Megan?
Well, I can't speak to how many hours it would be, but I can say that women are pretty used to doing three to four full-time jobs at a time, so I feel pretty good with that. So, in terms of my experience, as I mentioned, I've been deeply involved as a commissioner with the Housing and Community Development Commission for the past year and a half, and we've been delving into that work. So I feel that I can bring a lot of knowledge right off the bat with the specifics, because I've been working with staff and with council through different recommendations for, for some time now. I also mentioned at the beginning that I am a volunteer with Iowa Women's Foundation, which works on poverty issues for girls and women. And more recently, in the past four years, we've been very focused on childcare, which has not come up yet, but it is a very large community problem. And then also, while I've been on the Iowa Women's Foundation, I've also been the Community Outreach and Activism Chair. And so I've been learning a lot about communicating with public, working with specific stakeholders, and it seems to me it's very much in line with the kind of work that I've been doing as a commissioner, albeit in a different subject area.
Thank you, Megan. All right, so we're going to start with Pauline. Is that correct? Okay. According to the question, black drivers are being stopped by the Iowa City Police Department at nearly twice the at nearly twice the weight as white drivers. What can the city council do to change that? And do you think it's true?
From the data we've seen, it is true, although the numbers have been going down since, I believe, 2005. A professor at St. Ambrose University has been providing a study with students and then reporting off to us every two years on the data, and the numbers have been going down, which is a good sign, but there is still a lot of work to be done. I believe our current chief has made major strides as far as working with his team to be more inclusive and sensitive to any sort of racial issues or racial stops. The other part of the St. Ambrose study is that it will target a specific officer if there's a spike in the number of stops that that particular officer is doing. So the police chief or the CPRB, the Citizens Police Reboard, can look at those numbers too and see that there is potential issue there. But I'm pleased to see that the numbers are going down, which is good.
Thank you. John?
We do have the numbers, so I think that's to our credit. You know, we are trying to understand the nature of this issue, and it is trending in the right direction, so we're pleased with that. And there is training in place to try to always improve the behavior of our police department when it's engaging with the public. Something I have advocated for in the past, and I'd have to say didn't gain traction, maybe it will in a future configuration of council, but I believe we should really reduce the number of discretionary traffic stops. For example, if a car has a defective taillight, just simply note the license of that, or license plate of that vehicle. They can receive something by mail, telling them to that effect, but I'd really like to reduce those times when the police department stops a vehicle when it's something of a sort where it's really not necessary to make the traffic stop based on the evidence that's triggering the stop. So that has been something I'd like to continue to support.
Thank you. Janice?
I'm glad we have the figures, and I'm glad that the numbers are trending downward. I think a lot of the credit to that, or at least a big chunk of the credit, goes to the city for hiring Jody Matherley and for Jody Matherley as police chief to be working on training with all his officers. I like the fact that the study will pull out an individual officer if he or she has a disproportionate number of stops. What I'd like to see, a little bit in line with what John said, is use it as a public relations plus, have coupons, so that if an officer stops someone for something like a broken taillight or something else, they're building relationships by saying, "Not stopping you to ticket you. I'm stopping you because your taillight's out, and here's a coupon to go to a local place and get it fixed."
Thank you. Megan?
I think that it's fantastic that, actually, with Chief Matherley's hire, that there has been such a concerted effort to make this better. But we need to take training and turn it more into experience, because there are too many people who are being stopped and who are being stopped for the wrong reasons. I live on Highway 6. I speed. I've never been stopped. It's that simple. And I see often the people who are stopped, and they are not white. So there is a lot more work to be done, and I know that Chief Matherley, as well as the police force, know this, and I applaud them for this. But we really need to make sure that every officer who's trained is able to take that training, in a classroom or on-site, into neighborhoods. And I think that this also goes to, we need to continue working on trust between the residents and also between the police officers, and I think the way to do that is actually to create more rotations where there are police officers going into the neighborhoods and getting to know people, so that actually that implicit bias does not come out at moments that are too easy, such as a pretext stop.
Thank you. Laura?
I agree that Chief Matherley has done a good job in changing the focus from what he called "broken windows policing" to really "community-based policing" that needs to build relationships. He came to a South District meeting and said to us, you know, many of our neighbors are not white, and he said, "If you see my officers in your neighborhood making pretext stops, I want to hear about it, because that is not acceptable, and I will address it directly with the officer." So I was very pleased to see that kind of direct connection, not just training, but, you know, really, hopefully, walking the walk as well. Continued implementation of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Toolkit through, I think, all the departments, because it's not just, you know, the police who are having, interfacing with the public that where implicit bias and prejudices can be a problem. And collaborating with agencies and organizations outside the city, too. I think the Disparate Impact Commission and working with the county attorney's office, there's a lot of different players involved. You know, getting stopped is just the very beginning for a lot of people's contact with the criminal justice system.
Thank you. Johnson County continues to be the second-fastest-growing county in Iowa. With that growth comes the potential for urban sprawl. Please discuss ways to prevent sprawl, protect the natural areas of farmland, and they list infill development, density, and height as examples. And I believe we're starting with John. Urban sprawl.
Yeah, suburban sprawl. Certainly, you know, you mentioned infill and density. I'm certainly in support of that. In fact, as I mentioned earlier, some communities are looking at allowing higher densities of a very modest nature in single-family residential zones. Minneapolis is an example of that, if you're interested in following up on it. In terms of, as you move toward the core, I'm a strong believer in the idea that there is kind of a gradual increase in density as you move toward the center of town, and I look at the comprehensive plan as a guide for how to consider higher densities in the core. And my philosophy with respect to that is that Iowa City is generally a low-to-mid-rise city, but with an emphasis more on low-rise. And so what I consider to be the next increment, if you will, of development, by and large, would be mid-rise construction. That would be anything up to nine stories.
Thank you. Jan?
Deciding where to build is always a challenge. We've seen the downtown area, a lot of taller buildings go up in the downtown area. I think one of the areas that we can really look at is infill and some of the zoning codes that really limit what you can build in residential areas. I'd like to see the ability to build duplexes and triplexes or fourplexes without having to apply for a variance. That will help the school district as well. And I'd also like to see a little bit more density around some of the smaller hubs. So we have the downtown as a major hub, but we also have other business districts on the east side. And I'm not talking about big, tall buildings, just talking about a little more density in that area, so you have people, more people who can walk or ride their bikes to those areas as well.
Thank you. Megan?
I think that one of the things that current, as well as past councils, have shown is that there's a really deliberate sense of how do we grow our city? And I think, for the most part, the council has done quite well with a mix of infill, of talking about density, and discussing other options for that. I think one of the things that I would really like to bring to council is actually the notion of, because Iowa City is growing as much as it has, 10,000 people in roughly as many years, that's the size of Washington, Iowa, that we really need to look at, how can we have growth in a sustainable and responsible fashion throughout the city? There are areas that really need other kinds of building, the southeast side in particular, and we can look at different kinds of zoning to do that. I will be honest, it's not my forte. I'm going to rely on what experts tell me to give me a good sense of how to grow the city in a responsible fashion.
Thank you. Laura?
I think the key is proactive zoning and things like the form-based code. So as we've already mentioned, you know, the city's hands are tied by regulations sometimes that the city imposes, and if a development comes that passes muster with the current code, not a lot of options to say no, not a lot of options to require changes. And so we have to get ahead of that and have the code in place before the development occurs or before redevelopment occurs in order to allow some of the things that we're talking about up here. Yes, infill. Yes, density. Height, maybe so, in the right places and the right formation. So, you know, the density piece of it, I think I've been really pleased to hear people be more favorable to, with an understanding particularly that it's better for having people living closer to where they work, to where they shop. It's better typically for minimizing the impact on the environment as well. And also just having mixed use, not just residential that we're talking about, but having neighborhood commercial and mixing in places where people can shop and eat and work and play.
Thank you. Pauline?
It's a very good question, and one that came before us recently on the council was urban sprawl and development potential on the outskirts. So I kind of wondered, where do you draw the line for responsible growth? That particular one that came before us was only within two miles of Iowa City, and I'd said myself that I live four miles from City Hall, so, you know, the two miles doesn't seem very far, and so where do you draw the line as far as, are you sprawling out in the urban areas? Infill development is important if we can find the space within town. I was surprised John didn't mention Missing Middle. He's always a proponent of that, and there are great articles and great books written out there about Missing Middle-type concepts, and there's a very lovely development on Miller Avenue, the co-op housing, that has a nice mixture of buildings. And I think, somebody mentioned the fourplexes, you know, a mixture of condos and duplexes and fourplexes would be a nice way, I think, to have a variety of development types. And the question on density, how much is too much?
All right. Thank you. There's so many good questions here, it's really hard to pick for our last couple of What role does a city have in supporting local diversified food systems? Would you support expanding opportunities for urban agriculture within city limits? Kind of the opposite of sprawl, right? And I believe we're starting with Jan? No, are we starting with Megan this time? Or Janice?
We're starting with me.
Yes, Janice. Thank you.
I have to admit, that is not a question I've come across yet. I know that there was a discussion some time back about chickens and chicken coops, but urban agriculture is something I've seen abroad a lot. They have it, especially in Germany, they call it Schlebergarten. So there are portions of the city, usually in areas that are perhaps, would otherwise perhaps be floodplain or some area that you might not otherwise be able to use so well, that are reserved for people who would like, who may live in apartments in particular and don't have their own yards or garden, and who would really like to have a place to garden or grow flowers, or just sit in the midst of a flower garden. I think something like on that order would be definitely worth considering. We'd have to see what land is available and where it could be put, and what the demand would be, and what people are really looking for.
Thank you. Megan?
So when I lived in New York City a million years ago, in fact, yeah, there were people who used their fire escapes as gardens, and so it was pretty cool. So I think it's a neat idea. I think that we've got pockets of that in slightly different conceptualized ways. Schools, my kid's school has a garden, Weatherby Park has a community garden, and so I think that we can foster sort of models that are already in place, and I really like the idea of expanding it through the schools, K-12. How cool is that, that they go out to go and get their stuff? Actually, the library and by the rec center. So we have those models, and I think the short answer to this is yes, I'm in favor of it. I think we've got it going on in some places already.
Thank you. Laura?
I think it's all about scale, right? We have to scale up what we're doing. There are some great examples of community gardens and little places where there are edible plants that everyone can partake in, but we're talking about a local food ecosystem, right? I think that was the question. So Iowa City's commitment to the local food hub is huge. I think that's fantastic. It needs to expand. I am in favor of urban agriculture, and again, this is a piece of the proactive zoning, right? We need to plan in advance. Where are places within the city? We know we have some of the most productive, literally, land in the world, right, around here, and so we need to be looking at places that we can maximize production for the purpose of having local food production. And this is a big piece of our climate action, right? And we know that the transportation of food, what's involved in growing and producing from far away and bringing things here, I mean, this is all integrated into the system, so absolutely in favor of that, and I think it helps meet a lot of different needs and priorities of the city already.
Thank you. Pauline?
As had been mentioned, I think that we have done a lot as far as edible gardens and the community gardens and the parks and the surrounding areas, the rec center and City Hall right out front here. Recently, it was kind of cute with the teapots and tea leaves and things like that. I'm going to miss Rockne Cole, because he's been one that has been very supportive on the council as far as utilization of the poor farm and working with the county on having that provide food for the community. But we've also, as a council, been very supportive of the Table to Table program, as well as recently funded, helped to fund a group called The Food Hub, which is going to also provide food to the schools and the community. So I think those are some things, and I would continue to support funding those kinds of things.
And John?
I certainly am a strong supporter of our local food initiatives, and the council has been promoting community gardens in various locations in some of our park renovations, which I also support. I'd like to emphasize the schools. I feel they are a kind of an unrealized, there's unrealized potential on our school sites to really promote food production, both for the sake of production, but also to kind of incorporate it into our education at the elementary level. I'd also like to promote urban orchards. I think orchards are a wonderful landscape element, as well as being productive, and they don't quite, take quite as much effort as annuals do. So I think they, once you establish them, in some respects, in terms of your effort, you get more bang for your buck. And then I've also, and this is one example, I've done some interventions, shall we say? Oh, I saved the cherry tree by the rec center. I'm out of time.
Sorry. All right. I'm going to do one last question, and then we'll do our two-minute closing statements. Last May, five men were arrested for trafficking nine minors in Johnson County. Human trafficking is defined as the act of exploiting a person by force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of labor or commercial sex acts. Any minor in commercial sex is a victim of trafficking. Iowa City has an awful lot of hotel rooms. What can the city do to help stop trafficking? And we're starting with Megan.
Thank you. I'm going to be really honest, this is not something that I have thought of. However, I do know what a serious problem it is, and particularly in Iowa. It's something that we do, I thank whoever asked the question, because it's something that needs to be brought to the city's attention, and the fact that it hasn't crossed my radar yet means that probably there are many others who haven't been thinking about it also. All I can tell you is it's something that we would need to coordinate with local businesses, the hotel owners, with staff, and with the police, as well as letting the public know for signs that are dangerous of when there might be victims, and to really make sure that we're careful about that. I think websites, that's a big way in which people find their victims, and so I'm sort of spewing here, I'm going to be honest, but I think the bottom line is to talk to the people who do know how to address this, and then to really take their recommendations.
Thank you. Laura?
I think the city's role, obviously, law enforcement is a big piece of that, but education, so that we can get to the point of finding and uncovering the trafficking that's occurring, considering partnerships and collaboration, or even support for organizations like The Network, which works in eastern Iowa against human trafficking, I think is important. And knowing that this is regional, right? It's not, well, it's certainly broader than regional, but it's not just an Iowa City problem, and so on the law enforcement side, making sure that we're collaborating with other agencies, you know, all the way up to the federal level, and just, I think, those partnerships and collaborations. And I also think education on the level of, you know, as in public places, signage and opportunities for, you know, hotlines, learning about what's available, and as Megan said, you know, kind of being able to spot suspicious behavior and what might be innocuous if you weren't trained to know what to look for.
Thank you. Pauline?
This issue was brought to our attention as a council some time ago. It was in particular in relation to local massage parlors, and there was some concern that there could be some human trafficking going on with that. So our police department was right on top of that, and we made a resolution, and they kind of changed their practices and some rulings for the regulations on who was working in those massage parlors. So that was one step in the right direction. I think another item, as far as that goes, is that our police need to be trained to be sensitive to potential victims also, and know how to speak to them without raising an alarm to any folks that might be trafficking. without raising an alarm to any folks that might be trafficking that person. And people, like as you had mentioned, the hotel workers, gas station folks, to be aware of the signs of potential trafficking. And we could also, you know, look to see what other cities have been doing, the big cities, even like Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, what they're doing and not reinvent the wheel.
Thank you. John?
Yes, like I think at least several, several of us up here are not, haven't, I have not spent much time on this issue, although it is now part of our world, our reality. And so in that sense, it is something of significance and importance. You know, I would just add, I'm certainly a strong proponent of best practices in whatever aspect of what it is we do. So I would, I would be interested in understanding what those best practices are with respect to this. And then communications, it does seem to me, if we're talking about minors, incorporating that into our schools as part of the conversation that should take place with minors in terms of this threat that we have in the community as well as in families. You know, just more conversations acknowledging that this is something we have to deal with.
Thank you. Janice?
This is a topic on which law enforcement and education definitely take the lead. I believe that our police department has already done quite a bit of training. I understand that they hosted a conference on trafficking a couple of years ago statewide, and that not all that long ago, a complaint started with the U.S. Attorney's Office that ended up involving the FBI, local law enforcement, including our police force and a number of others in the area that resulted in a number of arrests on federal charges. And I believe that task force is still operating. The massage parlor ordinance was mentioned, as well as regular training of motel and hotel staff, especially desk clerks. Education is really a key to this. I'm very attuned to this because we had to, in the State Department, write an annual trafficking in persons report. So it's something that I've really paid attention to.
Thank you. Thank you guys all so much. I wish we had time to answer everybody's questions. The climate one got asked several times, so don't be surprised if people ask you about that afterward. But it's time to do our two-minute closing statements. And I think we're starting with Laura, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to address these questions this evening. If I am elected to Iowa City City Council, I will be a tireless advocate for our community. I will push forward the progressive policies that the current council has set in motion. And I will work to improve the process to bridge the divide between those who are, have interests that are, you know, on one side and maybe on the other, as I mentioned, through collaboration, through an interest-based understanding of problem-solving and using my background in municipal government. I will help set and follow the strategic plan. I will keep City Council working on policy and big-picture ideas. I will make sure that we don't get stuck in the weeds or micromanage. I will ensure that the relationship with city staff is effective and based on trust. And I will listen to the experts, to the residents, to my colleagues. I will learn from everyone in this community who has important input to provide. And then I will take action. And I will make sure that we are moving this community forward because sometimes we don't have the time to step back and say, "We don't have enough information. Now we're going to have to do more research." And so I know that my threshold for that might be different than some who are currently on the council, have been on the council before. But I am prepared to take my energy and my passion for this community to move things in the right direction. Again, my name is Laura Burgis. I'm running for an at-large seat on Iowa City City Council, and I'm asking for your vote on or before November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline?
In closing, I'd just like to say that I love Iowa City. And as I said earlier, I have lived here for almost 50 years, which seems like a long time, which it is. And I'd like to do whatever I can to ensure that it continues to thrive because I think it is a thriving community. Someone described it to me as charming, which I believe it is that, too. And I'd like to do whatever I can to continue that, excuse me. And I'm open to any ideas that members of the community might have to help meet that goal. And I'd like to thank all of you for your interest in city government and would appreciate your support and vote for me, Pauline Taylor, for the District A seat on or before Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thanks again, everyone, for coming. As was noted at the beginning of this event, I am running unopposed. However, I kind of view this as sort of a four-year performance review. And so if you do support my work on the City Council, please vote. Let me know that you support what I've been doing over the last four years. You know, what I tried to bring to City Council is really 30-plus years of public service, both doing the things that I described once arriving in Iowa City and 23 years prior to that in San Francisco, working as a landscape architect. So I have a long passion for public service, both as an elected official and as a public servant. Partly because of that 23-years experience, I kind of enjoy going into that long grass every now and then. As I mentioned, the cherry tree at the rec center would have been removed had it not been for my intervention. I don't know that the outcome at Horace Mann would have been what we see without my intervention there. There have been a number of occasions, and I'll just rifle off a couple more. If you know the downtown and its intersections at Lynn and Washington and the stop signs that are there, that was the result of my intervention suggesting that we didn't really need those traffic signals. They're expensive. The traffic is such that we can do without them. And I went through the effort of basically trying to convince the downtown association as well as council that it was probably a good idea to just leave those stop signs that were up during construction in place. And they agreed. And I think the outcome kind of speaks for itself. Similar thing happened at McCollister and Gilbert. I suggested we improve the safety there near Terry True Blood by putting in always stops. So I'm happy when I observe something that I think needs a little bit finer-grain attention to put it, to put my attention to those issues. So I have policy and fine grain to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice?
Thank you, Miriam, and thank you to the League for sponsoring. We've seen in recent weeks on the national level just what it means to be a public servant, with Foreign Service colleagues of mine stepping up to testify to their public service oath. I'm a public servant through and through. I took calculated risks during my career as a U.S. diplomat for my country because you don't go into the Foreign Service for money. I stood near Soviet tanks in East Berlin. I traveled in southeastern Turkey at the height of the PKK insurgency, visited people in bullet-pocked homes, and attended every session of the trial of Kurdish parliamentarians. Yet you never know. I lost a Foreign Service colleague in the East Africa embassy bombings. I learned to talk to people across the political spectrum, all walks of life, all levels of government. I'm a quick study. I had to be. You move to a new country every few years and you start from scratch. I'm a hard worker. When I learned Turkish, I studied day and night so that as embassy human rights officer, I could talk directly to activists and victims without need of a translator. I will work just as hard for you. I believe I bring unique perspective of some, that of someone who grew up here, then lived in other cities, both in this, both in this country and abroad, than before choosing to come home. I've seen a lot of things that work and plenty that don't. There's an astounding amount to learn about how a city works. I'm learning every day and that won't stop. I'm a single mom, a grandmother raising her granddaughter, a lawyer, a diplomat, an activist, a public servant in an Iowan. And with your help, I would like very much to add city councillor to that list. I hope I can earn your trust and your vote on November 5th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Megan still needs to go, right?
Yes. Thank you again for your amazing questions and for your willingness to be here to listen to what we have to say. I'm running to strengthen our diversity through more inclusion. I'm here to help people's lives. I am so ready to dig in. I'm a doer who wants to further the legacy of the Core Four. And one of the things that I admire the most is the initiative that they took when they saw things that needed to be done. They said, "Let's do this." Climate action, Forest View, the racial toolkit, these were all things that were city council-led. And I feel that they leapt in at moments where they saw the need, whether it was something that was uncomfortable or whether they felt it, some people thought it was outstepping their bounds. I think it's important for council to remain judicious in the way that they govern and to really work with staff, but to understand that we are the ones who are elected and we have to listen to your voices and to understand what the city needs as well as the residents. We've got some really exciting things to decide in the next cycle. We have to work on climate action. We have to think about how to grow the city responsibly and to help bolster up neighborhoods that need it the most. And we need to continue pressing on how do we actually make our city more inclusive and make people's lives better on a daily basis. That's why I'm running. And I'm really excited to have this opportunity. I would love to represent you sitting up here as a part of council. Thank you. I'm Megan Alter. Vote for me on November 5th.
Thank you so much to the candidates, to those of you in attendance who wrote wonderful questions, those watching at home, and to the staff of our local television station for making this video cast and live streaming possible. We want to thank our cosponsor, the Community Transportation Committee as well. We'd like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and the question askers, and that the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any particular candidate. Remember to vote in the general election on or before November 5. And remember to bring your ID. If you have questions about whether your ID needs to be expired or not, make sure you look that up ahead of time. Travis Whitebird is here. Bring your driver's license if you have one. And if you have a voter ID card and you've lost it, then ask Travis for a new one. This is a very busy week for League activities. Tomorrow night is the candidate forum for the Iowa City Community School Board. That will be at the District Services Center at 1725 Dodge Street. And it will be livestreamed from the District Parent Organization Facebook page. And we are very excited, as we said, we've been around for about 100 years now. And we are sponsoring on Thursday at 7:30 with the Iowa Policy Center, a talk about the status of women in politics. University of Iowa Professor Tracy Osborne will be speaking at the Shamba Auditorium at the library. It's an important event leading to the centennial of the passing of the 19th Amendment and the forming of the League of Women Voters 100 years ago in 1920. Thank you all very much for coming.